Okay, let's move to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the November Town Council meeting. I'd like to start out with Rhode Hall, Jason Little, Ebsen, Patricia Wald.
Here.
Kevin Burke.
Here.
Michael Johannis.
Here.
Brian Warren.
Here.
Okay, the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is the purport of the minutes for October fifteenth and October twenty seventh.
Make motion that we approve the minutes from ten fifteen and ten twenty seven.
Okay.
I have a first and second from Patricia and Mike to purport minutes, uh, October fifteenth and October twenty seventh. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. If you know and passes four zero. And the next thing we have is comments from the public. Uh, we have anybody here in the public? Okay, if not, we're gonna move on. Comments from the council. Only things I have, uh, we're getting ready to go into the holiday season. Uh, we got the land of lights coming up, uh, starting in November. Christmas Lake Village having the festival of lights in December. We got the Christmas parade coming up and ice skating. Uh, anybody wants more additional details on this? Uh, please go to Santa Claus Tourism and check out their website. They got all the times listed there and the dates. Also, I'd like the, and all of us would like to wish our veterans a very special day tomorrow. We appreciate their help over the years and many thanks for making America great and keeping us safe. And my other thing is, we got the ready grant, uh, with River person coming in, uh, December second at eleven o'clock Central time. So we'll be meeting over there, uh, where the buildings will be constructed, so. Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to bring up the mural that's on the side of Holiday Foods. Um, working diligently, all of us are, even if police officers see a light shining at night, we do spacing at night.
Help them.
Yes, you did, you helped so much, that's right, you helped ladder. Are you helped open and close? But we hope to have it done by the time Christmas festivities happen in Santa Claus. However, the weather always plays a cool key in that. And as long as the temperature is under fifty, the paint doesn't always set right. So just now, I hope you go see it, it's gorgeous. Um, but we're working on it. Hopefully we'll get done. The tree that we are gonna place on town property is a next project. So, um, when we get closer to that, things happen, I'm gonna let everybody know.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to reports, uh, Max.
Yeah, he's taking classes.
So I'm filling in for him. You should have his activity report for the last month, so everybody knew that. Any questions, or any left? Alright, the other two things that you wanted to mention was we got two more grants. Uh, the first grant was from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security for twenty-five hundred dollars to purchase another AD. So they was giving out free money there, so there was very few people put in for it, so that was a good thing. The other one that we got from the Spencer County Community Foundation is gonna go towards the replacement of the hydraulic extrication equipment, get some battery operated stuff. We got, uh, nine thousand dollars from that. So on the, on the first, I would have to check the check from there.
And I talked to him.
How much was it?
Nine thousand.
I talked to Max and he said, you guys are up. Do you have any idea how many thousand dollars for the grants you've got each year?
You know what, he usually has that in here, but.
I know. I mean, it, it's like sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Or more?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Usually he keeps a tally, right?
Yeah, I know, he has one, you know he does, it's just you don't have it here. But yeah.
I think he's like, well, he thinks like he's pretty grand.
Yeah, I think it should, I think he should be granted, right?
Well, I took up with some extra money to make up a difference there, but.
Yeah.
He's got some other grants he's working on to make up that difference.
Yeah. Good.
Other than that, I don't have anything, unless you can.
Uh, we have invoice.
We do. Um, he might not be aware of this, but we have a Stryker invoice. If you remember back when, um, we approved that Stryker CPR machine, they invoiced us for part of it and we paid that, the majority of it. There has been an outstanding balance, um, of four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, that pushes the original approval over by seven cents. So I'm needing a reapproval to pay this invoice in full. Um, the delay for the invoice was, um, the state, the invoices that they had presented up to this date had used the word statement on there. So we were unable to pay from a stating, statement per the State Board of Accounts. It actually has to say that it's an invoice. So they had to go in to some software company and have a custom piece of paper made that would override their default statement. So it would say invoice. So we finally just got that, um, from them, but, um, I couldn't pay it because it actually is seven cents off from the original vote. And I think we're, I went back and read the minutes and I think from the minutes, we didn't actually have a physical quote in our hand. Max had just given us an amount. Um, I think he just gave the even amount, not the actual technical amount. So, um, it's only seven cents difference. I think it was just him rattling off a number, um, from the podium versus what it actually was. Um, but this is all in that original sixteen thousand that you guys approv- approved from the beginning. Aside from seven cents.
How can we just make a motion to extend it for seven cents or extend the invoice? Or accept?
Yeah, I just need an approval for this amount.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I need.
Okay.
I made a motion, we approved invoice from Stryker for four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
One second. Have a first and second from Mike and Brian. Any other discussion on this invoice? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. You have my monthly reports. Uh, to start off, I guess with the tree trail. Uh, very well attended, I believe we had about four hundred and fifty children, um, which is bound hard for, uh, the last few times we've done it. Really great turnout, I think everybody was really pleased with the, all kinds of the activities and, uh, the booth participants, we had, I think, twenty-nine that showed up showing up, uh, which is more than double what we normally have. So all in all, very good event. Uh, and we got out of there just, uh, before the rain started, so. Worked out really well. Um, as far as items of note, uh, we do have an upcoming event, uh, as Kevin had alluded to earlier, um, as part of the Christmas celebration weekends. Uh, we will be hosting the ice rink, uh, at the community center again this year. I believe that's the twentieth and the twenty-first. And then, uh, the day of the parade, uh, we will actually have the, uh, community center available, uh, just additional parking as well as, uh, restroom, um, access as well for the parade. Jane, I don't know, do we want to, uh, Jennifer Rich's reappearance? Do we want to do that tonight or do you want to wait till December?
No, we can do that, it's fine.
Okay. Um, at our meeting last week, the park board had, uh, recommended Jennifer Rich for reappearance, uh, for a four-year term, uh, I believe expiring in twenty twenty-nine. I believe that needs, uh, draws approval if we entertain that.
When does her term expire?
It expires this year and then.
Twenty-three or five?
April third, I guess.
So this will be for, starting January first of twenty-six, for a four-year term. Her current term is ending December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five.
So, so would this be twenty twenty-nine or twenty-third?
Twenty-nine.
It would expire December tw- thirty-first of twenty-nine.
Okay, okay.
I make a motion, um, to accept the reappearance of Jennifer Rich on the.
Have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a first and second from Patricia and Mike, uh, to reapoint her, um, for a four-year term. Jennifer. Um, any other comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. If you know and passes four zero.
Thank you. Very good. We should let them know.
Appreciate it.
I'll mention that. And then, uh, they also, uh, recommended the meeting schedule for next year. Uh, it would be at seven AM Central time, uh, here at Town Hall. Uh, it would be on the first Monday of the month, with the exception of July and September, which is not out of the ordinary. Um, they decided to move the July meeting to Wednesday, uh, as the fourth falls on Saturday. Case or people want to take a long weekend, uh, however, the fourth will be observed. Um, and then Labor Day, obviously, in September, a little later than usual, but, uh, they would like to move that meeting to, uh, the Wednesdays and Sundays. Uh, I don't know, does that need, I think that needs council approval as well, correct Jane?
It does, we usually do it when we do the full list of all the meetings.
Perfect.
So that'll be at the next meeting, when we set the meeting dates for the Town Council, the Water, or everything on one forum. But I will make note of these to put on there for next meeting's approval.
Very good. And then, uh, following up on last month's meeting, you all asked me to reach back out to Brad Scales, uh, due to Skelton and conflicts, he's not able to attend. Uh, but did get some clarification and sent that out, uh, via email to you all as well as the, uh, preliminary estimates that he had put out. Uh, I don't know if any of you have questions, comments, if Kevin, uh, would like to elaborate? I haven't had real time to look at it in depth, but I, I did glance through it, so, I mean, I think you all are a minute to doing something like that. Where, you all actually still retain ownership, but his was with USI, I believe, to correct. Yeah, I think you all will see your input, uh, anything to accommodate it.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I don't, that property is very useful in that way and I know many people over the years, over my thirty, whatever years living here, thirty-five years living here, have tried to develop something else for people to do. Um, and it hasn't worked, and so I'm really glad this one's going to work, hopefully.
Appreciate the optimism.
Yes.
That's all I've got, unless anybody has any questions for me. Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, you got my report?
Here we go.
Any questions on my report?
I don't have any.
Other than that, we approved a sign last month, so keep it early, so that's gonna be an improvement for that sign. That's about all I have. Now, you did ask about somebody wanting to build or something here.
Well, we were just talking, so I just wanted to confirm that nobody in the council or your department has talked to him.
Right.
And they were just gonna talk.
And that's it.
I did reach out to him last Friday.
There's, there's a rumor that's going around and there's, it's not founded, so that's a good thing.
Well, good, I thought maybe.
But he said he would get with us when the time.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
I think everybody has monthly report. Any questions on that? That's a crazy month.
Yeah, it's a lot.
A crazy day. Yes.
Did we have any injuries, accidents with injuries within your jurisdiction?
We had several accidents, but nobody got hurt.
Good, that's what I was supposed to.
I think actually there was only one technical crash report that I pulled because there was very minimal damage, but only the rest of them just came and out. I had one slide off right out in front of me.
Yeah.
As I was trying to get to one. So I pulled off, I said, you guys okay? Yeah, we're good, I got four-wheel drive, I'll be out in a minute. Uh, so I went on to the next one, which we didn't know if that guy was hurt or not. He wasn't hurt, he was just very angry.
Yeah.
He was actually flipping the sky off, and I said, are you okay?
Was angry with mother, mother nature.
Yes, very much so. Other than that, that's all I have on the monthly report. Uh, we'd like to thank all of our veterans that are in this room, including, uh, one of our own guys here, uh, Logan Helming, who's done some tours and been a busy man, and we're hoping he don't get sent to Indianapolis here soon, depending on what, uh, the president does. Uh, their crime's a little high right now, and I think they're asking for some help, so we'll see. And your son as well. Uh, Mr. Warren's son's in the military, so, um, now let's get down to business, about spending some money. So, I believe you have an email that come from Sternbergs. Uh, I know, um, Anderson spoke with you guys, I was not here, unfortunately I was in the hospital, uh, with a kid, but, uh, I think he, he spoke very well about it, to my understanding. Uh, I followed up on all that. Unfortunately Sternbergs does not leave that vehicle safe to operate. Um, and in order to save the money, uh, I felt no need to try to get it transported by tow truck to whether either Jasper or Evansville, it has to go to a dealership. Um, I spoke with two different dealerships. One was equal in price of repairs as Sternbergs, by the hour, I'd say. Um, and the one in Evansville was actually about fifteen to twenty dollars more an hour than Sternbergs. I feel comfortable with Sternbergs going ahead and fixing it. Um, and on a different note, but same note, uh, we lost another vehicle today. Um, our twenty-twenty forty, our twenty-twenty, uh, Durango, which, uh, Logan drives, unfortunately went down today. We're not a hundred percent sure what's wrong with it, it's not firing. I'm thinking possibly, uh, fuel pump or something to do like. Um, right now, he's driving my vehicle, uh, because it's a better vehicle to drive and I took the old pool car that we have. So, we're down two vehicles. Um, we are in desperate need to get these two vehicles fixed. Um, Jaws came and towed the vehicle today when it broke down. They, I told him not, not to work on it. Our vehicle's had a hundred thousand mile warranties, this vehicle only has seventy thousand miles on it. But I called Sternbergs, where we purchased it, Shane Oxford, and he said it is five years or a hundred thousand. Well, we got that vehicle in twenty-twenty, so my guess it's months, just a few months over on the, uh, warranty. So, that being said, uh, he's gonna find out tomorrow, I see him in the van number, if it's not under oath, he's gonna go ahead and tell Jaws, just get it going, get it fixed, get it back on the road. Now, that one's not gonna cost near as much as the Ford that we're dealing with. Um, so I was a little disappointed, not, I, I guess, yeah, I'm a little disappointed that the email that you were sent, I didn't spoke with the service manager at Sternbergs. Verbally, he stated to me that he is eighty-five to ninety percent sure that eighty-five to ninety percent of the bill will be reimbursed by Ford, reimbursed. Now, I thought he was going to put that in writing, he did not, he sent the email that you have. Um, but verbally, he told me that, and I understand. We don't know what Ford's gonna do, but he ensured me that that, the issue with the Ford has everything to do with the recall. So he said, I cannot imagine that Ford would not reimburse. Now, the only thing that we're not gonna reimburse Ford is he's gonna put all my spark plugs in it. Uh, he said, if we're gonna pull the sparks, we might as well put new ones in it instead of just putting one, do you know what I'm saying? I agree. Um, so, my question to the council is, would we be able to use the money out of any day and go forward with Adam Sternbergs, fix this Ford, the twenty-twenty-two Ford, and get it back on the road?
Did we get a recall notice?
We did, yes, we've, we've had a recall notice going on for a year and a half. Ford just does not.
We have a copy of that notice?
Yes, yes, multiple copies.
Have you looked at it?
They just don't have the part. They just don't have the part to fix the recall.
Yes, by federal law, anytime there's a recall, what's that?
Why are they gonna fix it if they don't have?
Do they program?
No. They're going to fix what is wrong with it right now, which is a cracked, uh, fuel injector. The cracked fuel injector was caused by the part that was recalled. Ford has not built that part yet. So that part is not built. By federal law, they have to notify you immediately if you have recalls on your vehicle. So we had recalls on both twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorers that we have, both sixty thousand miles or less. But again, they don't have the part done, so, bone is currently driving the other twenty-twenty-two. So my question to Sternbergs was, also to Ford, when's this one gonna break down? And they said, we have no idea. They said it may break down, it may not. I said, when is the part gonna be fixed? Nobody can answer that, including Ford.
So I go back to what Kevin said, and I asked this before. If we don't have the recall part, how can you fix the rest of it?
They're gonna crash it.
They're, yes.
Yeah.
They're gonna put, they're gonna put a Band-Aid on it.
Yes.
Oh, that it doesn't break down again before the recall part comes. So it will operate without the recall part. It's just it's causing those injectors to crack, then in turn spill gas onto the hot engine and exhaust system, which can cause a fire. They're gonna fix what's wrong with it right now. And we may drive it for three months, six months, seven months, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-five, three more years before it breaks again, but hopefully, being optimistic, Ford gets that part soon, I would hope. Now, it's, the recall was a year and a half ago. And they've yet to make that part for the twenty-two. I spoke with the chief of Evansville, he's a good friend of mine. They ordered forty of them at the same time and I ordered R two. So they're dealing with the same issue in Evansville right now. Now, not all forty of them went down, but they do have some that are in the exact same situation as us.
So repairing this should be the responsibility of Ford.
Should be, yes.
Because of the part that we need in order to not come into this situation.
Correct.
But the spark plugs would be something that would not be covered.
Correct.
By just because we need the spark plugs.
Yeah, so eighty-five percent of it, we should
Have a good.
be reimbursed and put that money back into rainy day, but Ford will not promise anything.
That's what I'm, what I'm gonna ask. And ask, uh, what does the recall say that they will fix? Are they saying they'll only fix that part, or they're gonna fix anything that that part caused the injury?
They don't say, they never say that, they just say that we have a recall for your vehicle and this is what could happen if the recall is not corrected. So we take it to a dealership to get it corrected, and every time we take it to the dealership, they basically say, okay, we, we don't have that part yet, Ford hasn't released it.
Okay, but there's nothing guaranteeing us that Ford will fix what that part caused the fail. That's what I'm saying. So we get this money out of rainy day, there's nothing guarantees us that Ford is gonna pay for this invoice because the only thing they're really saying they're gonna pay for is the bad part that they have in the car.
So what is, what's your alternative?
See, that's the thing.
Mm-hmm.
So Sternberg is going to submit to Ford that, that in their professional opinion, the damage was caused because of the part not being available.
Correct.
You're right, Ford may not reimburse us for that money, but what's the alternative? We have no vehicle to drive, so, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see. We can fix it, it has to be fixed. But I do have a problem with anybody saying we're gonna get the money back from Ford.
Right.
We have, we do not.
There's no guarantee.
No, we, and that's why they didn't put it in writing. I don't know that Ford, just like the service manager, he said eighty-five, ninety percent. That's verbal, he verbalized it to me, but he, he doesn't truly know.
So we.
He's smart enough to not put it on paper.
Right, we have to assume that this money, we're going to spend, it's not gonna be reimbursed.
Exactly.
That's assumption.
Yes.
And then we will pursue getting reimbursed. We will take those steps.
Yeah, I will take the steps to try to get reimbursed through Ford, but as of right now, Ford's not saying, okay, we're gonna fix this. They need documentation from Sternbergs saying, this part that you did not provide is the reason this vehicle broke down. And Sternbergs is going to do that. But then it's up to Ford.
Right.
And again, Evansville Police Department is dealing with the exact same thing we're dealing with.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Yeah, yes.
The thing is, we have no guarantee of getting this money back.
No, I'm saying.
I agree that it needs to be fixed, there's no problem with it.
No guarantee.
It's just, we can't sit there and say that, that we're, we're gonna get that money back. It's what it's an expense we're putting out.
Yes, and Kevin, you, what is?
Well, apart from the recall, what's the powertrain warranty on those? Isn't that part of the powertrain?
It is not part of the powertrain.
Injectors there?
Nope, I checked that, I checked with Sternbergs, checked with other dealerships.
I would move through them, five-year, hundred thousand mile warranty on your powertrain.
Ours has, ours has what they call fleet. It's a hundred thousand mile, five-year fleet warranty. Uh, injectors are not, including in that fleet warranty.
Which part of the powertrain?
I, I don't disagree at all, and I argued that point, but the people I argued to, you as an attorney may argue that point to them, but with me, it wasn't getting there. And again, I, I don't disagree at all. I immediately thought that, oh, this is great, man, they'll fix it, it's covering our warranty. No, everything but the injectors is what I was told.
Do you have the warranty?
Uh, I should, yes. Yeah, I would have it filed away with everything else.
What should be your obligation?
But again, Evansville is dealing with the same situation, that's not unfortunately covering the warranty.
I think we have this, that we should hold on to the defective parts.
Oh, absolutely. I don't disagree.
In our possession, not.
Well, I've already told Sternbergs that, I said, whatever you take out of it, as we get the approval to get it fixed, whatever you take out of it, put it in a box, I wanna keep it. And when Ford comes down and says, well, we're not, this is not what happened. Plus, I wanna copy the documentation that Sternbergs is sending to Ford. Because without me seeing it, I don't know, I, I trust. I put my trust in people, that's what I'm saying to them, but I wanna see it in my.
I think they should seal the box and indicate what parts they put in there, wouldn't you think?
I don't know if they can seal it real, I mean, just give us, give us back the parts or whatever. It's not like we have a lot of extra Ford parts that are in police station.
No, we don't have any.
So it's crazy, so now the decision is whether we move forward with this, with or without the guarantee, which we deserve.
Right, there is no guarantee, no, absolutely not, okay.
But we need a vehicle.
Yes.
We need a vehicle.
And rainy day is the appropriate place to take this one.
Yes.
Okay, so, without doubt, I make a motion that we pay the two thousand three, thirty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents to get the Ford Explorer workable. So we have vehicles to drive in our police department.
Second, have a first and second from Patricia and Mike. Any other discussion on this matter? If not, we can, we can vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay. If you know and it passes four zero.
Thank you. Like I said, I just wanna get it back on the road, especially before the holidays and, um, right now, with the ice and snow, we, we definitely need it. And, you know, this goes back to, like I said before, I wanna go back and say what I've said before is adding newer vehicles, you would think this would happen, but Mike and I were talking with the rest of council about it in here, and I, I hope everyone else would agree, vehicles are just not made the way they used to be. Um, we used to have Crown Dicks when I first started here that would, you drop two hundred thousand miles, even the state police would tell you that, they would drop to two hundred thousand miles. And now departments are switching out vehicles at seventy, and I. They would drop them 200,000 miles, and now departments are switching out vehicles at 70 and 100,000 miles. They're getting ready to get new vehicles, which is unheard of, so.
When will you know more about the other vehicle that huddled out today?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, and if it's just a fuel pump or something, again, my, I hate to say it, but my maintenance budget is, it's over. It's, it's probably a couple thousand over. Unfortunately, there's nothing I can do. I thought and felt that having a fleet of newer vehicles, and I'll be honest with you, the oldest car we have on the fleet, the 2016 Charger, has the least problems out of all the new ones. We've already had the brand new trucks in.
And that's kind of different because six or seven years ago, Dodge was having all the problems. Everybody had Chargers had problems with.
Yes.
And we're not.
Yes, yeah, we're not. Again, I, I tried to budget, again, I tried to budget in June, July for the next year, not knowing that these things are gonna break in that next year, and hopeful that they don't, because they're all, I mean, I don't, the 2016 Charger has the most miles on it. The rest of them are between 10 and 60,000 miles. The Charger's got like 147,000 miles on it, she's still going strong. So I don't know.
I didn't have to do it fast.
It's unpredictable, yeah.
Yeah, it is. But I thank the council for giving that part pushed over. That takes a little stress off of me as far as budgeting and making sure these guys have a vehicle that they can get out in. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Glad that they was helping.
Thank you.
Well, good snow, it's dark, cold, and the, over there as well. So I've got just a few brief comments tonight. Item A, trails, is an update. We're just waiting on the I's to get out, the T's to get across when it rains, with the contractor. We do have tentatively rescheduled a kickoff meeting sometime within the next two weeks. If anybody is interested in attending that, I'll put notes out for that. Other than that, that's all I have on the trails.
For us, if any, on that case, if anybody wants to attend.
It'd be a bunch of boring nuts and bolts kind of conversation, but. So that's all I have on the trails. If the council has any questions. Item F, street departments, pavement update on community crossing project. As you're all painfully aware, the road closure is still happening. Fingers crossed that Thursday, the guardrails will be put in place. And contractors telling me that due to liability, not content, that they cannot officially open the road until the guardrails are back in place. Now tomorrow, they will be out fixing the problem we discussed earlier. And I think they said they have some roll remarks that they're gonna take out as well. So essentially, they'll be bringing a big flame thrower out and reheat the pavement straight on. The driveway approaches, I think there were two at the golf course, one going back to the condos, and then maybe then one other. But anyway, I will meet with the contractor out there and make sure that y'all get directed by us.
Maybe I missed this, have they striped on all any of this yet?
No, no. With traffic, typically, temperatures gotta be 35 degrees and rising, which I think we're still in that window, so yeah. They did do the overlay of clubhouse road Friday.
What's your?
Yeah, well, I mean, anything was better than what we asked. That was a pretty low bar. And, and I mean, we had really just stopped a lot of the maintenance, we were, you know, this project was a slow start, at least as far as intersection concerns. But yes, now that it is about this much.
You kept it patched as much as you could.
Yeah, we just, we use a generic type patching material, which is not, you know, it's not designed to hold up forever. Yeah, it did.
Smoothener.
But yeah, striping will be filed tomorrow. They will be put in shelter stone down as well. So I have on the streets. Item G, wastewater, I did distribute a copy of my draft 2026 budget. Not really a whole lot to discuss, I just hope that the council maybe can put a look at it and looked at the disparities and forecast of 26 revenue virginity. If the council does have any ideas, suggestions or changes, let me know. I hope to ratify that, or have you ratified that at December's meeting?
Want to take it under?
Yeah, yeah. If there are any other questions, I'll move on.
Most I have one about the street department, which I'll probably, I'll pay on the salt or.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I've probably got 100 ton in the barn, and then I still got 60 in reserve that we haven't ordered for this year.
And I, I think we need to make a statement about that. There was no snow predicted for this area whatsoever.
Um, yes, I agree with that.
Yes, and so pre-treating the roads was not even a thought.
Yeah, let's face it, I mean, it did catch us off guard. When I went to bed last night, there was nothing. We woke up this morning and it was covered, so yeah. It's, it's just an oversight.
So there's no thoughts about.
And the state didn't print it.
No, no one planned this to happen.
Typically, when there's snow in the forecast, we got notes, they said, well, two weeks before.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, um, you know, weather kind of like automobile manufacturing isn't as reliable as it should be. Anything else? But no, we had plenty of salt, going through all the snow equipment, check hoses, belts, tires, and all that stuff. So we're ready to rock and roll whenever unfortunately it does come. And if all the prognosticators are right and you're saying we need winter.
Yes, right.
We'll see.
Yeah, but I agree, none of the roads were true.
But nowhere, yeah, because nobody expected it.
Yeah, I forget how many, I'd seen it before today, there was hundreds of accidents.
Oh, yeah. They had it sweeping, just sort of, not even a car, they had the weather patterns.
Yeah, as one of the old guys in the room, if people would just pay attention and drive us, since a lot of it would have been avoided. Item H, underwater, this is more topical, probably one of the important things we'll talk about tonight. As you know, we partnered up, or I should say EPA and the state of Indiana partnered up with us to rid hazardous water surface lines in everybody's water system, or my statewide, probably nationwide water system. So as part of that, we are actively inventorying our water surface lines. The idea here, or the goal, is to eliminate all lead and/or galvanized surface lines that feed from our meter from the town to your home. We have been fortunate that in the scheme of things, town Santa Claus is a younger community. So we have not found any, temper that later, we've not found any lead or galvanized surface lines. However, we have approximately 700 that we have not been able to ascertain. So the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is those 700 homeowners will be receiving a letter. It'll have our name on it, but it's from EPA, Iden, right? So it'll have a QR code on there for you to scan to give instructions on how to do this. But it's imperative that folks that get this letter, read it, understand it, and follow the instructions on it. That's as simple as I can put it. I don't have any names, obviously, right now, who it is, but there's approximately 700 homeowners that will get that number, so. Out of the 2,000 and some customers that we have, so we were able to at least eliminate the fuel dealers.
Can I assume that most of those are outside of the Christmas Lake Village?
I'm sorry?
Most of those are outside of Christmas.
I honestly don't know, but I think a good majority of them are in Christmas Lake Village. However, we have ascertained that they're all either polyethylene or rigid PVC pipe. There are just a smattering of homes that were built at a time when they were polyethylene and plastic came about, so there would just be a handful. I can share this information with the council if you guys still desire.
Please.
Now, is that an expense that the towns are like this?
We vary the cost of, we're actually working with a consulting firm, I think would be the right term. They help guide communities like ours through this process. They've been helping us throughout since, I think we started this in 21. A lot of the current stuff, just tabletop studies, discussion within, et cetera. So yes, we are paying, we are bearing all costs. And fortunately, we have not had to do any remediation yet, but I believe that communities are also taking on that burden as well. Because maybe you guys have driven through some of the bigger, older cities and seen trenches from the street to their people's houses. And I've seen that myself, so, and it's my understanding, not anything guaranteed, but my understanding that it's been borne by the municipality.
Over, but good about the lead.
It really is, it absolutely is.
Really good.
So I have underwater. If the council wants to just refer to my monthly report, really nothing much to add, or point out, just unless the council does have any question.
Working on getting a safety coordinator, I assume?
Yes, still, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah. I have a pretty big field of folks that are interested, so it's just been taking time to get interviews set up and centered.
You go ahead, try to have that done in the next two, three months, or?
The new safety coordinator, I hope to have one by the end of the year.
Looks like a pretty efficient situation. Really, isn't it striking, the difference in precipitation?
Yeah, yeah, that was quite noticeable, so. So the correlation coefficient, if you wanna call it that, is, is right there, so.
Yeah, clear.
Yep. So we will be conducting some studies here, actually not really studies, we're crunching numbers, to see how effective our new rehab has been. You know, the monthly reports kind of show that when we have heavy precipitation, not only are flows down, but the high flows that we do receive are not as sustained or not as long as they used to be, so our recovery times come a lot faster. But we will be using August of 2024 as the dry month, so your dry months tell you what your flow should actually be. So we will compare that to, I think it was April, anyway, one of the wet years, it kind of seems. So we can maybe draw off some more informed conclusions from that as well. But if the council has no question, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I get back up just for one second? I did wanna go off script, and I think the council will indulge me. And I'm not gonna mention any names, but I wanna spend, send a special thank you to the Spencer County Emergency Emergency Medical Service. Is that right? And I also wanna thank BJ Stallman, who's here tonight. I didn't, I'm not gonna mention any names, but he's right here. And then also, your compatriot that night, just about to tell him thank you. My neighbor had a heart attack Saturday, and these folks responded. And the Spencer County Ambulance Service, and I don't even know those folks, but they did a spectacular job. And I probably should not say this, but I'm going to, the hospital even made comments on how well they did that night, so.
Yay.
You guys have a great service here, so.
Great.
Kitty showed up as well, so, yeah, I mean, called it out, and everybody responded, so. But thank you guys again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, that's awesome. Thanks for adding that. Town attorney?
Great, I'll have two things for you, which you've seen before. This, the first is ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance to create wheel tax fund. This is about the second reading and adoption. As you recall, this is where we put getting wheel tax funding to get from the county. And it's used for basically highway project.
I have a proposal to approve second reading on 2025-04, wheel tax.
A second.
And have first and second from Mike, and Patricia on this wheel tax. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. But if none, that passes four zero.
Thank you for digging in on that. That's a good thing, I mean, you're the one who dug in, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I hope you can just start digging back in.
Yeah, I know, because at least we've dug in.
I also have ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance imposing sex offender restrictions. As you recall, this is to, as the county sheriff has asked concerning restrictions on sex offenders for Halloween. I would add, and also add it for basically events, sort of, in town concerning children to make convicted sex offenders from attending such things as the Easter egg and touch drive, figurine trail, celebration ice rink, youth sporting events, and some other bits on town property. So this is also the second reading adoption of that ordinance.
And also, this could be used by the state sheriff if they were here in town, correct? Orders?
Technically, it would only be our town police officers or enforcement orders within town.
Sheriff.
They would be able to, within the county.
There's different.
Yeah, technically, they would take them from our guys.
Yes.
That's what they would do.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-06, sex offender restrictions, second reading.
Second. First from Patricia, and second from Brian. Any other discussion on this, ordinance? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. But if none, that passes four zero.
I do, you're gonna wait on the last round. Deciding what you're gonna do, I brought that file too, because it's like open eye, open action.
Okay, so just to clarify, the road that extends from I Way 245, I Way 245 down to 600 has three names. It has 1450, it has 1400?
75.
1475, that's right. But indot has it named Clubhouse Road. As long as indot has it named that, we couldn't even seek a grant to get a repair on that road. We cannot do anything, because we haven't named three different things. So my goal, I've already spoken to some people, but I'm going to continue that conversation. And it looks like the most logistically intelligent thing to do is go with Clubhouse Road. But nothing's been decided, it just looks like that's where we need to be in order.
We have an ordinance.
Maybe right, well, I don't know what they read that that.
We have an ordinance.
Maybe the clubhouse road.
But was it all the way to 600?
No, that's.
No, I don't think so.
See, that's the issue. Yeah, it needs to be, huh?
We can't do that.
Oh, I'm going to the county.
Okay.
Yes, no, I'm already, that's my next step, I've just been a little too.
Well, we're not, and we're having interlocal agreement giving this, that road all the way to 600.
Right, but it isn't named that, and that's the problem. We have to have a name that's consistent with indot, yes, yeah. And then we can find those if it comes 1450 again, so it, 600 then crosses back.
Yeah, now, just as a moment of clarification, maybe you can clarify my thoughts, but just because we have an interlocal agreement, does that give us ownership of that road?
No, it's just an agreement.
We would, we would want to be the commissioners to agree to it.
Yes, so that is, that is something.
And joint, and joint organs with the county, most likely, to name it.
Yeah.
And kind of have recite the fact that it's a prerogative, it's in the county for part of it, and part of it's all in the town, and it happens in town, happens in the county.
So my goal is next week to go to the courthouse and speak with who I have to speak with and try to get the ball rolling on making it consistent name, and please wish me luck.
We need to talk to commissioners.
Yeah, I know, I have all, yeah, but I also, I need to talk to Kay first, out of the courthouse.
Yeah, Kay, her one is the one who's.
And it'll all be two.
Not one, one address. Well, actually, I mentioned it to the postmistress down here.
Yeah.
And where Russ Winkler is, and then the Hugh Banks, and all those people, when they moved out there.
It's Lamar.
They have Lamar addresses. I always thought the post office determined which post office served you. That's not true, it's actually when the, when the county does the 911 addressing, they designate whether it's considered Lamar or Santa Claus. So those people have Lamar addresses. So those people have Lamar addresses.
So they use P O boxes.
They have used, if they had rural delivery, it would be from the Lamar post office. So basically, the local jurisdictions get to dictate to the US Postal Service, who has to serve certain areas. I had no clue, I heard the US Postal Service deciding which, whether it was Lamar or Evanston, or Santa Claus, or whatever. But that's not the case.
It's a bundle of stuff, so. And I've already checked the highway department, that's who's out with the recycle center, I have the highway department. And then next, I'm going there, but as I said, I've been working a lot lately, and the next couple of weeks will be on my opportunity.
Also, the interlocal agreement we did was only for four years, which I think is up at the end of this year.
Is it already gone now?
All right, I was saying that's one, I was hoping to cancel before.
Yeah.
Okay, now, check that for me before I go next week.
Seems like we just signed that thing.
Because I need that information as well. But the indoc naming of the road is what's going to prevent us from anything, any kind of interference. So we have to, and if you look at the signs posted, it all says Clubhouse Road on the closures on that.
Yeah, that's true.
They all say Clubhouse Road, every one of the closures, thanks.
The only other thing I have, which was placed over here, I assume you won't be commissioners.
Oh, you can, I was going to address it, but.
They will, apparently we need to know where, but your CBIT fit distribution.
Yeah, so I was going to talk about this. In the past, when we received the FIT and the CBIT money, it came down from the county telling us where to deposit that money. So I included the June distributions, just so you can see where the money has been going for all previous years. So we would receive this money on our June and December tax disbursements, and the county would give us a spreadsheet letting us know, you know, how much and where it goes. So they changed the law to where we get to decide where we put that money. We can put it wherever we want to put it. With that being said, wherever we put it, that money has to follow the rules of that fund. So let's just say, like, if you, if you allocate it all to go to CCB, that money has to follow the rules of the CCB fund. So, and that would be the case with any fund that you decide to put it in. So what the State Board of Accounts has said is that if it goes into the general fund, nothing has to be done. I just take the money and I put it into the general fund. If we're going to do anything outside of the general fund, we either have to have an ordinance, a resolution, or a vote by the board noted in the minutes. So I would recommend we vote on where that money goes, just so we don't have to constantly redo another ordinance, another resolution, because you may change your mind when the distributions are coming. So it's getting brought up, because we're getting ready to get the December distributions.
What is most advantageous?
Well, what I would ask for this year, just because I'm an accountant and I like to keep things clean, is I would recommend for the December distributions, they be deposited like the June ones, so we're not starting something afresh mid-year. So that way, if we go back and audit for that year, that would be my recommendation. Is, we're not talking about a lot of money, I wrote the amounts here to the side.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, so we're not talking about a large sum of money, so what I'm asking for is that you guys make a vote that the December distributions be applied as the June distributions, you know, were, were applied. But with that being said, going forward, you guys, or tonight, you can decide to put it wherever you want to put it. And if there's no vote, then I have to put it into the general, because we don't have a vote or an ordinance or anything. So some of this money does go to funds that are outside of the general fund, which is why, if we're going to follow what we've done for all previous years, you guys are going to have to vote to allow me to do that. If not, it's all going to go into this general financial and this general CBIT taxes. But as you can see, the highlighted ones are the FIT taxes, the orange ones and the yellow ones are the CBIT taxes. They also get distributed among CCB, CCF, Park and Rec, and CCD. So in order for me to continue to divide that up in that form or fashion, I would need a vote for that.
So after, after Christmas then, or after the new year, do we have to vote again on something? Okay. So we're now, to keep it solid for twenty twenty-five, I would make a motion that the December, December distributions be applied as the June payments were.
Second, first from Patricia, and a second from Mike. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let it be known it passes four zero.
And then after Christmas, we'll.
Yes, so the next distribution will be in June. So you guys have plenty of time to decide if you want to change it up, do something different. If you guys know for sure that you're going to change it, and it's always going to be that way, it's always going to go to general, or it's all going to go to one of these other funds or whatever. I mean, we can do an ordinance or a resolution, so you don't have to vote on it every distribution. But you can. The benefit of voting on it is you can change it, so like you could. I'm just saying that you could change it as you go.
But we could establish some ordinance right now, and if we decide to change it two years down the road, we can change it.
An ordinance, yes.
You can, yes. But it would keep you from having to vote every six months, or you could just change it, and, you know, however you want to do it.
So we just, otherwise, we would just need a vote each year.
So with tonight's vote, we're going to, I'm going to apply the December, the same way we've been doing it for all these years, the way that the county had sent it to us. And then you guys can decide before next June whether you want to keep it that way, change it, put all the money in a different fund, however you want to do it.
Okay.
I would like to see it go ahead and make that decision tonight, if you can, on this. It's under, it's under a thousand.
Well, we'll have to type up an ordinance or a resolution, so.
But you can tell me.
You can tell us what you want.
Tell us what you want. Shouldn't a commercial vehicle be going to have something to do with streets? Now, what purpose that tax is put, it's on commercial vehicles.
You like that idea?
I do, no.
For the six hundred dollars every time you say it?
I was hoping that it doesn't.
Well, actually, the CBIT is only one hundred and thirty.
Yeah, I know, oh, yeah, it's only one hundred and thirty. Yeah, Russ has the hundred and thirty budget. Hundred and thirty budget is putting in. But you don't mind, any money's good money.
I'll take it, mom.
Yeah.
You said a little piece pie, better, no pie.
Yeah, that's right. So then, if we would make. If we would make that decision, would we put one in one, one in another?
You can do it however you want. They put it in your hands to, I mean.
You could say, you could say percentages, that would go in.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
You can do percentages, you could just put it all in one department, like park or fire, whatever, you can do whatever you want to do.
Yeah, the commercial vehicle one is logical for those.
So whichever one, whatever you guys want.
I think we need to, to consider our accounts before we make a final decision where we want it to be put. Like, you know, I know it's not a lot of money, but it's something worth at least making a good decision about.
So that's why I gave you the breakdown, so you could see what accounts we've used in the past, you guys can make a decision. We can do a resolution or ordinance whenever you're ready. But this will at least take care of the December to do it.
Yeah, it's done the same way.
So the next thing I have is the holiday and safety bonus payment date. We usually pay that out the first payment in December. So I just kind of wanted to see if you guys are wanting to do that again for the payments for this year, if you want it to be the first pay in December, or the second pay, or.
I, I think the way we do it the first of December is best for several reasons. So many bills come due in January, and you've also got Christmas, or whatever holiday you celebrate during the end of December, and I think it's good planning money, if not just good money to say happy new year. You know, so in, in my opinion, I think that the beginning of December would be the greatest time of all to get that money. You know, because everything comes after Christmas.
I agree.
Yeah.
So is that a motion?
I, I will make a motion, do you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Russ, is there a safety bonus? Have we had a good year on that?
We've had a very good year.
Mm-hmm.
I report it each month, I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, all yours, you always have.
Zach, you haven't had any?
I don't know, not that I know of, I'm.
Okay. The day name, paper, paper cut or anything like that?
Nothing.
Nothing worth stitches, right?
Kyle's not drinking white out anymore.
I will, it's on record.
It is.
She hasn't fallen.
She's probably watching that all the time.
Well, I make a motion that we distribute holiday and safety bonus payments the first pay of December.
Second. I have a first from Patricia, and a second from Brian. Today, holiday and safety bonuses in December. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let it be known it passes four zero.
Okay, the next thing I have is you all have received a letter from Chris Middleton. She regrets that she couldn't be here tonight to present the health insurance herself, but she wrote a very nice letter to explain, you know, what, what the rates are going to be. So the increase is a nine point six percent increase. So anything really under ten is considered to be, you know, pretty good. So we're right on target for what we, you know, think that is. There's also another benefit for all the employees is there's not going to be any changes to the deductible, the out-of-pocket expenses, the dental and vision and life insurance, there's no changes to those premiums at all. Those are, those premiums are staying the same. The only thing that's going to be increasing is the actual health insurance at the normal rate that we would expect it to increase. Everything else seems to be noted, so I guess I need to know whether you guys are okay with that premium. She's got the prices there, it's going to increase from twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents to twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
Without two two, yes.
Yes, we do, we always budget for it. So it is in the budget.
The two thousand two hundred dollars isn't a huge amount.
The other thing, I guess, that we should decide with the increase of the health insurance amounts are, are, we're currently, the town is paying eighty-two point five percent of the premium, and the employees are paying seventeen point five percent of the premium. So I don't know if you want, with the increase, if you want to pass that on equally with the same percentage rates that have been in the past, or if you want to change, any, anything like that.
Eighteen, what, are we paying?
Eighteen, yeah.
And a half point five, okay.
It's already working.
I think it works. I think it works.
Do the same percentages?
Same percentages.
I mean, that's going to make, make the employees pay a little bit more too, that's a.
Mm-hmm, yeah, spreads out that increase between the town and the employees.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, every year that happens.
Right.
To me, it happens with insurance and, I think as long as we are doing eighty-two point five percent, that maybe we should just stick with that. That's my opinion.
Are you guys, I agree, I agree too.
Okay.
For us.
So see that as a benefit?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
And I've said it once, and I'll say it again, crew that you guys have now, and stick to it, people.
Yeah.
I'm looking to be here for the long, I've got guys going through the scholarship program, they want to learn a bit of this, so. Anything you can do to entice them, I would encourage.
Okay, so do we need a motion?
Yes, so I'll need a motion for the new health insurance amount, so I can pay that, you know, when the policy gets paid, comes due, when, and that amount is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And then also to leave the percentages in place.
Two motions, or one?
We can do it all in one.
Why don't we get the salary?
Yeah.
If that's the salary, or if you hear that percentages go in there.
Okay, well, I guess it's.
So we can just do the financial change this time, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have somebody who can make a motion for the increase?
The regular.
It is authorized, it's renewable.
Okay.
So with United Healthcare.
So, yeah, I second that, Mike was first, I second.
Okay, that's first and second, from Mike and Patricia. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let it be known it passes four zero.
Okay, then, other thing I have under just miscellaneous, which I'm not sure we are going to be making these appointments tonight, but just to make you aware, we did discuss at the last meeting, the appointment for the Spencer County Economic Development Board. We left that at, Tricia was going to go to a meeting that they had, so I don't know if she wants to speak or expand on any of that, just.
Yes, it is, it is actually abbreviated as CEDO. And there was a second meeting, and I read it, but it was canceled, and I had not received an email, so I thought maybe they decided I wasn't on the board, but I am definitely on that board. And we are trying to make plans for the county that would help Santa Claus, as well as other places. But decisions on the board shoulders don't really happen until, I don't know, March. So I am following CEDO carefully. I went to sort of a ribbon cutting at Richland in order to represent us and be part of the CEDO group, they're going to have a new medical building. So my intent is to get everything I can be, so Santa Claus is there, and then get Santa Claus's benefits from this economic group. Nothing, I know nothing else, there it is, okay?
Yeah, and would Kevin's comments on their minutes were incorporated in the, their changes about to leave?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we did get another letter, and they accepted me. I do believe the other person is going to be on the board as well, which is fine, but I am known as the town Santa Claus's representative.
So do we need a formally appointer now?
If, yes, if that's your intent.
So I'll make a motion to appoint.
Actually, according to their bible, you nominated it, it's subject to.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
That's how they change the bible, it's between the two.
Yes, I had a discussion to make sure that I wasn't.
Okay.
Not being.
You'll appoint her, subject to the county's approval.
Yes, because that'll be next semester.
Okay, so Spencer County, I call them the best.
Yes.
Next semester.
I always talk in semesters, sorry, teacher. Yes, the beginning of next year sometime.
In fact, when I, when I talk to someone, too, it's like, oh, that, that, the term would actually start in March.
Yes, I think it's March, yeah, I think so. So right now, you know.
So do we have a second?
I'll say.
Somebody else can have it too, but I'm, I'm glad to represent us in a positive fashion.
Agree. I have a first from Mike, and a second from Brian to nominate Patricia to this committee. Any other discussion? Any other people want to chime in? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
You're right, same.
But if you know it passes three, you know, put Patricia, I stand.
Okay, the water board is going to be having a board member opening as well. Um, the water board is gonna be having a, um, board member opening as well. Um, Matt Woolans, who is currently serving on the board, um, has recently gotten married and moved outside of the water board district, so he's unable to continue to serve. November was his last meeting, um, but they do not have a candidate to bring forth to the town.
Does that have that political affiliation or not?
It does not. Um, they would prefer to have representation from the village. Um, however, I think that they would entertain anyone's nomination. But, um, I think they are trying to seek someone to represent the village on the water board.
So it's also my understanding, anybody can.
It can be anybody, that's what I said, yes. It can be anybody.
As a customer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'll talk to Scott sometimes.
See what, yeah.
Yes.
I might have some ideas.
Okay, yeah, so he would welcome that.
Normally, what we do at the state network, water board representation.
Right.
And that's, yes, yes.
Um, I sent out the letter from Indiana Regional 15, um, asking for our appointment to their board as well. Currently, um, Mike Johannes is our, um, appointee that's on that board, so, um, it's time to renew that. It's a yearly appointment. So, um, if he wants to continue to serve or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll.
Okay.
Kevin, I'd like to talk to him.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have to have a motion for that.
Okay, make a motion to, um, retain Mike Johannes as the Regional 15 representative of this board, or of this town.
I'll say, I have a first from Patricia and a second from Brian to retain Mike with Regional 15. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Let's be known and pass this four zero.
Okay, and, um, the APC boards, I also sent out an email regarding that. There are positions open, um, coming to an end on December 31st of 2025. Um, one of them is, um, needs to be a Democrat, um, nomination. So that's something, again, I'm not sure that we have any names specifically, or I have not heard of any of it. But that's something that, um, needs to be worked on before the December meeting, so.
Okay, so who's on APC right now?
Uh, I didn't bring the whole list, but it's those two, Russ.
Myself and Brian.
Randy.
Randy. Uh, I'm, I'm just. And, uh, I'll send that.
Yeah, directed, who is resigning?
Who is resigning?
Who, who else is resigning?
Are there any approvals?
She said there's two, oh.
Mm-hmm, it is. I'll send it back out to you. I sent it out to you guys an email, but I.
Yeah, I remember who it was.
I'll send it back out again.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That those are, um.
Me either. Okay.
The hearing?
All right, took over some ways.
You picked a match, please.
Yeah. It's not Randy.
I can't remember who I sent him. Anyway, yeah, I'll send it back out again. It's gonna be the December meeting, yeah, but.
It's gonna be that one. I know.
So I just wanted to bring those aware, so you could be thinking for the December meeting, so we have nominations for that.
I've been thinking, well, I haven't come up with anything yet. Even ask the side.
Not afraid of it, it is, to my understanding, he can't have any other office or position if that happens, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's gonna be a political.
And that's the nightmare. So I, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else under miscellaneous, so, anybody have anything else to add?
Through the vouchers.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to the vouchers. I have general vouchers in the amount of $83,848.61.
The motion for general vouchers at $83,848.61.
Second, I have a first from Patricia and a second from Brian to approve the general voucher. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let's be known and pass this four zero.
I have payroll vouchers in the amount of $96,661.51.
Make a motion to approve payroll vouchers at $96,661.51.
Second, I have a first from Patricia and a second from Mike to pay payroll vouchers. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let's be known and pass this four zero.
I have wastewater vouchers in the amount of $460,127.73.
Make a motion to approve wastewater vouchers at $460,127.73.
Second, I have a first from Patricia and a second from Brian to pay wastewater vouchers. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let's be known and pass this four zero.
I apologize, I'm on ordinance, by the way, I noticed that I didn't, I didn't have my secretary over here. I thought we were going to pass it back to that special meeting in October, so I can't remember the date. It never came to the date, guys.
Oh, I, I had the, I have that copy of that one in there. I changed the date on it.
Oh, look at that.
I just didn't have the wheel tax, but I had the other one.
She took care of you.
Oh, good.
Um.
I did, I took care of it.
Good deal.
This person, so I'm just gonna send a little separate, you need to be done with it.
Yeah, cause that's, that special meeting.
This is a little different.
We got two.
I thought you was.
Did you change your date?
The sex offender one?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I had a copy and I changed the date at the bottom. I didn't realize he was bringing a copy of it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We doubled up by accident.
No, better to double up, they might get it then. Kevin, make sure you grab those, so that they don't get confused in this. Okay. I think it's four, right? Yours was?
While we're signing these, I want to remind everybody that two of the council seats are up for election.
So if you are going to, you need to get things going, right? Isn't it by March that you have to? That would be better to put your name in by March, is it?
Yeah, when you're changing, last year it was in February.
Okay, yeah, I think it's pretty soon, but then you can also.
The point is, we just need to watch.
Yes.
And make sure you don't miss it.
Right, right.
If you're going wrong.
Yeah.
I didn't say.
Wait, maybe.
The one with my handwritten.
Yeah, good.
It's in the first ones.
It's one with the handwritten.
It was in the second four, correct?
Yeah, but I thought she said she was, I thought you said you replaced it with the correct date on it.
It wasn't replaced. There should be two, that one and that one.
It was a little.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought I was supposed to pull those out, because I thought we had that one coming down.
Oh, it may be.
With the, with the, with the date correct.
I don't know.
That's what I was asking.
This is the one I sent.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
It's almost one of them, sorry.
Yeah, it's on.
It's on.
I'm making a motion in the yard, second, first and second for yard. I want to thank the public for, uh, watching this tonight.
Yeah, we have a.
I have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let's be known, Santa Claus, the town council, it's up for the year.